Good afternoon to all of you and thank you for joining with us. We are now ready to officially open the Putnam County School Board District Meeting for December the 13th, 2020. We ask that you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance by Mr. Phil Leary and then our prayer will be given by Mrs. Tanya Whitehurst.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask one thing before Tanya comes up? We lost a longtime employee over the weekend, in the last few days, Ms. Carol, Georgia Carol Milton. Her husband was a former career principal and school board member here in Putnam County, and they're having private services, but I'd like to ask that we just hold a moment of silence before we have the prayer.
That's fine.
That's okay. Bow your heads. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. We're bringing that to our attention.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today just, first of all, just always wanting to take time to thank you for who you are. We thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity that you have given us to just be here and to do business for our school district, and it's really about our students that you have put in our care. And so, Father, I pray that each one of our members and our superintendent and just all of those who are making decisions will just rely on you for wisdom and discernment and that the decisions that are made are always what is best for our students, our employees, and our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Mrs. Whitehurst. We appreciate that. Beautiful. Thank you. Okay, again, we'd like to thank you for taking time out of your afternoon to come and be a part of our meeting. At this time, we will have our presentation by the Art in the Capital Award recipients, Mrs. Marybeth Hedstrom, and following that, we will have the revitalization update by
Good afternoon, school board members, Superintendent Surrancey, other school officials, audience members. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm Marybeth Hedstrom. I'm the administrator for workforce education. Arnie Duncan, the former United States Secretary of Education, said, "The arts significantly boost student achievement, reduce discipline problems, and increase the odds students will go on to graduate from college." I believe he's correct. Today, I'm delighted to have the privilege of presenting the winners of the 2023 Art in the Capital competition. The Art in the Capital competition is authorized by Florida statutes, and it's a statewide visual arts competition that requires each school district to hold an art competition annually for all students in grades six through eight attending public schools, private schools, and home schools in Florida. The Putnam County School District hosted the Art in the Capital competition this fall and had 36 submissions throughout the county. Superintendent Surrancey, would you help me deliver the certificates to our winners? Earning honorable mention, Jathan Murrow, an eighth grade student from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences. Earning honorable mention, Ty Jordan, an eighth grade student from Pennile Baptist Academy. Earning honorable mention, Amber Rundles, eighth grade student from Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences. And the winner of the competition is an eighth grade student from Pennile Baptist Academy, Haley Schoolcraft.
Must not be here.
Okay. Can we get a picture with?
Maybe hold her artwork up.
Yeah. Did you join us, Ms. Essler?
Why?
Just to mouse it out?
Ask her boss why.
Sandy, you need to get down there.
That's gonna try to hide behind one of them.
Is that it? Okay. Let's slide her a little bit. Sandy, come on down.
Ms. Gill, you're gonna hold one too if you need her to.
You get the whole stage of that. How about that?
Excellent.
That's very good. The detail is awesome.
What happened to their art?
You can hold the little.
Well, the one winner is going to the Capitol.
Okay, that's what we're saying.
That's Ms. Essler, not much.
Well, either you can take it home or would you like for us to hang it in the building for the year?
All right. Good choice.
Just make sure you get it back at the end of your.
And while Mr. Bowling is coming somewhere in our agenda, I think it's QI that's having one of their instructors is going to an art conference in Sarasota, and it's connected to this and talking about the importance of the arts in education, so that's great. All right, Mr. Bowling?
I'm glad y'all got to see something colorful before we got to this because, I mean, that just kind of blew my presentation away. Some very talented young people. Afternoon, everybody. I've been approached in the last five weeks several times, and I'm sure you have, and the superintendent mentioned in our last leadership meeting that he had been approached several times, and the prevailing question out there is, you know, what now? The bond has passed. What are you gonna do? You know, there were a lot of promises made. We heard about committees. There was just several moving parts to this entire plan. So he said, when I say he, I mean the superintendent, said, "Thomas, I think, you know, you should give the board an update," and then that would give us kind of an official platform to roll out our plans, show the community what we've been up to so far, and then just our plans going forward. So let's start by recapping the revitalization plan. It's a very ambitious 10-year plan to build nine new schools in three different phases. This plan is actually beginning, we're about to go into year two. We typically look at things in terms of the physical year, but for simplicity's sake and for the sake of the public, this plan is kind of broken down by the calendar year, so year two will start officially in January. Okay? All right, so phase one, we were looking at just the sites and the particular bills that are in phase one, so we've kind of nailed that down, and that has already been released by the newspaper, but I want to just kind of elaborate on each one of these things. For the special facilities project, now let me back up one more time just on the 10-year plan. So the three phases are broken into bond schools, which are the elementary schools, and special facilities funding, which are the junior, senior high school bills because they are the most expensive schools to build, and our contribution for special facilities project is the same no matter the cost of the project. So for that reason, we're using bond dollars for the elementary schools, and that's the way they were advertised, and then we're seeking special facilities funding from the state for the three junior, senior high schools. So in each phase, we'll have one junior, senior high and two elementary schools. So we are, again, in phase one, about to start year one of the 10-year plan, but the nine subsequent years officially starts in January. So in January, the clock is ticking for nine years for this to be, all the dust will clear, and there will be nine new schools. Okay? Everybody with me so far? All right, so Crescent City Junior, Senior High School, over the summer, we presented to DOE, and they recommended to the state that Crescent City Junior, Senior High School be completely rebuilt using special facilities funding. Of course, we have our own contribution of that, but we are essentially demolishing every building that currently sits at Crescent City Junior, Senior High School, and it will be replaced with a brand-new building. We zeroed in on the first two sites for the elementary schools, one being in Palaca and the other in Crescent City. I'll talk about the Palaca site first. EH, the EH Miller is the site that we chose for the Palaca School, for the first school. It's a campus that is in a great location, first of all. It has access by way of Horseman Club Road and Round Lake Road. There's lots of room on that facility, so you could have parent pickup on one side and a bus loop on the other side, traffic coming from two different roads. There's lots of engineering room to stack traffic on the property itself, and another really good thing about that property, whereas with Crescent City High School, it's being built in stages. One building will be built, students will move in it, then we'll demolish existing buildings, and then we'll do that in three different phases until it's all done, and it's really a neat process, but it doesn't come without at least some disruption and maybe some portables. That won't be the case with the first elementary school in Palaca. That campus sits completely empty right now, so we'll be able to demolish virtually everything that DOE lets us get rid of and then start from scratch and then build all that over again.
And we do have city water and sewage that goes there.
It does have city water and sewage.
But I remember many years ago, the school district ran, helped run the line out towards Kelly Smith to tie in, and I thought that we had tied in out there, so, okay.
Yes, sir. And the other elementary site is also in Crescent City, along with the first junior, senior high school, and we chose the Miller Middle site for that particular build, and that came with a lot of, you know, soul-searching and looking at every option and overturning over every stone we possibly could, just because that particular site has lots and lots of interest. But I'll give you our rationale for eventually landing on that site. We only own three pieces of property in Crescent City, and they're the three pieces of property that we currently have schools sitting on. The Middleton-Burney site, where the current elementary school is in Crescent City, is tight. It's very tight. As a matter of fact, if you wanted to put another portable on that property, you'd have to take out an oak tree. There's just no room to build buildings and demolish. There's just not enough room on that property. And then the Crescent City site, the high school site, we're already rebuilding the junior, senior high school at that location, so we don't have enough room to sit another elementary school on that property. The Miller site currently sits empty. You know, it's had a school map on it or a school footprint for the last 100 years. We have just a simply fantastic auditorium and a gymnasium that's there. DOE won't let us build an auditorium that size, and most elementary schools don't come with a gymnasium. Those two facilities will be completely remodeled, refurbished. They'll be magnificent facilities, and then we'll build a new school around it coming back. It's our most expensive property that we own, and it's, I think personally, and this is just my personal opinion, that building a new school there will go a long way to help realize the revitalization that's going on in Crescent City, particularly the downtown area. You know, you'll have lots of people going there. We think that will create a certain amount of excitement, and it goes on and on and on, but, again, that is the reason why we chose that particular location. It has too many advantages. We listened to everything that everyone had to say about maybe finding an alternative location, and we tried, but this is the property we have. It's very desirable property, and it's gonna make a great addition to the community of Crescent City, I think, when it's all said and done. All right, so phase two, also special facilities funding. We have Interlochen Junior, Senior High School that we will apply with the state for special facilities funding right about three years from now. Interlochen Junior, Senior High is just about the same age as Crescent City Junior, Senior High. They're sister schools. They were built right at about the same time, using the same design plan, and they're both old and they need to be replaced. The bond funding for the two, the next two schools, one will be in Palaca, and that site is, has not yet been determined, and then the other will be at Melrose Elementary at the current site, and it'll be built much less, much like Crescent City Junior, Senior High will, where we will build one building at a time. There is enough property at that location to actually build that, rebuild that school in phases. All right, and then phase three, the special facilities school would be Palaca Junior, Senior High School. Palaca Junior, Senior High, I think, was built in '77, so by the time we're six years into this process, Palaca Junior, Senior High is now over 40 years old, so the custodial process would allow us to do away with a lot of those original buildings that were built at Palaca High School when it was constructed, so it will be prime for special facilities funding at that time. Consequently, that's the reason why Palaca High is at the back end of this and not in one of the other places, because I've had lots and lots of people ask me, being a Palaca High School alumni, why is Palaca Junior, Senior High School last? Well, it's the most current or the newest junior, senior high school that we have outside of QI Roberts that's not a part of this process at all. And for the bond schools, it would be two more sister schools, which would be Browning Pierce Elementary and then Robert H. Jenkins, formerly known as Interlochen Elementary School. Those schools were built at about the same time, and they'll have some life left in them, and at that point, we'll have to make some decisions on how much of that will be a remodel as opposed to complete replacement. The current plan now is to have those schools on their current sites, but there's a lot of time between now and then, so we'll see. We listen to every conversation that we get, and, you know, we've discovered some really good ideas along the way, so we'll certainly continue to listen to the community as we go forward. All right, so what's next in the bond referendum now that it's passed? And one thing I do want to say about the bond referendum now that it has passed is, and I've said this again and again and again, 54% of the population of Putnam County that decided to vote in the last election approved this, and, you know, and some people say 54%, that's a lot of people. Well, the flip side of that coin is 46% didn't approve. So the take-home I get from all of this is, you've got 46% of the population that's saying, "You're ramming this down my throat. It better be good." And then you've got 54% of the population saying, "We supported you. We put our faith in you. This better be good." So my take-home is, no matter what, we better put our best work into this. So, you know, I tell everybody, any part of this plan that I play a part in, it will absolutely be my best work, 100% going forward. So we take this very seriously. We're not making any hasty decisions. I think we're all doing our best work, and we really, really want to get this right. So here's where we are, the next steps. So right after the bond did pass, by a slim margin in my opinion, but it did pass, we did advertise for a facilities planner, and we advertised that for about two weeks, and we hadn't yet gotten a suitable, I call it boat full of applicants, that I think have the proper qualifications, you know, and a good pool of people to actually interview and select an applicant, so we're continuing to advertise that until field. But we do have a backup plan, and I'll touch on the backup plan here in just a second. So we've also visited other school districts for ideas. I've been meeting with my counterparts in regions around us that's building just because they're growing like crazy, or they have their own referendum, and then there's, in some cases, it's just one or two facilities that they're building, but they have the they have the expertise and they have the experience that I'm seeking, because we haven't done anything like this, when I say we, I mean Putnam County as a district, in quite a while. So when we were advertising this and we were, well, we didn't really advertise, but when we were informing the public of our intentions, we talked about the process of developing a BOC, a Bond Oversight Committee, and we've developed bylaws and an application process, and I'll take a deeper dive into that in just a second, and then a Design Advisory Committee. We also talked a lot about that and the procedures and the application. I'll take a little bit of a dive there as well. And then we've already advertised for two or posted on our website, the RFP for two architects for the two elementary schools. We also, we already have an architect for the junior, senior high school, and then we're also doing an RFP for Design Management, and I've completed the complete scope of work for Design Management, but that is essentially the backup plan for the project manager, so I'm gonna take some time and show you exactly what Design Management is all about. I have the complete bylaws and applications in your packet. I have the complete procedures and application for the DAC in your packets. I have the scope of work for Design Management in your packets as well. So I'm not gonna go through that and read it line by line. I'm just gonna give you the, maybe not 30,000-foot view, but probably 15,000-foot view of those things, and then you can crawl through all of that material at your own leisure. All right, so let's start with the BOC, the Bond Oversight Committee. This is the one that we've been asked about the most. What are you gonna do with this money now that you've been approved to sell bonds and get these dollars to build new schools? All right, so in the bylaws, the first paragraph of the bylaws pretty much tells you the gist of the purpose and what they're about. And the purpose of the Bond Oversight Committee is to review, monitor, and inform the public of the planning, progress, and implementation of the projects funded with proceeds from the school board's bond as set forth by the school board resolution on March 2nd, 2021, and approved by the voters on November 8th, 2022, the general obligation bonds. The committee is established to provide transparency and instill confidence in Putnam County, in Putnam County's taxpayers that projected funds, that projects funded, I'm sorry, projects. Let me read that again. The committee is established to provide transparency and instill confidence in Putnam County's taxpayers that projects funded through the issuance of general obligation bonds are being delivered according to the district revitalization plan set forth in the school board resolution. I wrote that, and I've read it eight times, and I still stumble over it, but it is a mouthful, but those are the general responsibilities of the Bond Oversight Committee. There's an application process that goes along with it, and the appointment of the committee members is pulled right off of the bylaws itself, but all appointments will be made by the school board and superintendent from applications submitted to the district. We promise that this, these would all be residents, and none of the BOC would be school board personnel, but they'll be chosen by you guys. The committee shall consist of 12 members appointed by the superintendent and the school board members from a list of candidates submitting written applications. Each of the five board members and the superintendent will select two applicants from the application pool to create the committee of 12. So you guys will get with Ashley Bakoo somehow. She'll get with you individually because you can't meet collectively, and you'll choose two members from the applications. If you pick someone who's already been chosen, you'll be asked to choose again, but you'll each have two selections, each of you.
Have the applications been developed?
Yes, sir, and the application itself is in your packet. They haven't been posted yet. Ashley's gonna take care of all of that after the fact. I wanted to roll this out in this platform first, but they'll be online shortly.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So on the committee, will it be broken up by areas? Like, will there be a specific number for each district or each southwest, central?
They will be broken up based on your region. So the Bond Oversight Committee, and I was gonna kind of elaborate on this in just a minute, but the Bond Oversight Committee is for the bond, and it will be for three-year, and that was the next thing I was gonna say, time commitment and term. Appointments to the committee shall be for a three-year term, and members may be reappointed to successive terms as the school board and superintendency fit. The PCSD Bond Oversight Committee will meet quarterly per year, and then they'll also report to the board annually with a written report.
Can I ask, Holly, just clarify, are you asking, are your members selected from your district?
Yes.
Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Okay.
But I think it's, it'll be...
So, with the Bond Oversight Committee, everything is done here in phases, so the Bond Oversight Committee is for phase one, the first three years. That's why they're appointed for three years, and then we move on to a new bill. So when it comes to elementary schools, you're gonna, for phase one anyway, you're definitely gonna want someone from probably the community of Crescent City. Now, when we get to phase two, there won't be an elementary school or a high school being built in Crescent City, so you may want to look to Palaca or Interlochen when you're making your selection for phase two. And then that's why you also have the ability to reappoint someone who's already been appointed on the BOC if you'd like, you know, if it's someone relevant, that, you know, if it's a Palaca person that's, you know, is a prominent business person, they are well-respected, they're a natural-born leader in that community, and then they have subsequent schools being built, and they are interested in serving, again, for another three-year term, and you as a board member see fit to reappoint them, then you can do it. They apply, and you can reappoint.
I feel certain that we'll have a cross-section throughout Putnam County.
Yes, sir.
And everything will be, Thomas, in line, I'm certain, with SREF, state requirements for educational facilities, which now would include all the new security safeguards that come with a school plus the shelter capacities and everything.
Yes, sir, and that's kind of touching into the Design Advisory Committee, which I'm gonna touch on here in just a second. Holly, you have a clarification question before we go on?
No, no.
And there's a lot of information that I have here, and that's why a lot of it is included in your packet, but, because, you know, this is a presentation, and by default, they're usually 15 minutes or less, but I could crawl over the application if you'd like.
So are we allowed to approach people about applying and encourage people to apply? Okay.
Yes.
I think Mr. Leary had a question, too. Yeah. So do you want us to wait to the end of your presentation to ask questions and make some comments, or so you can get through it?
Not necessarily. I mean, this is a presentation for you and the public, and certainly I'm presenting to the board, so if you'd like to jump in there, jump in at any time.
If it's immediately pertinent, it would be good to ask him right now.
Yeah, I would think that there ought to be, for the Oversight Committee, you know, qualifications in construction, construction management, bond finance, or, you know, I mean, we do have financial people here that do bonds and that type of thing. I mean, we do have financial people here that do bonds and that type of thing. And so, I mean, just because they're an outstanding business person or a person in the community doesn't mean that they'll have any ability to understand and comprehend. I mean, these projects, I've been through a couple of them in, in other counties and they're monumental. And what's really important is what I would consider, you know, maybe the, what you're calling a facilities manager or whatever, that that be a construction superintendent that would, you know, basically be in charge of all construction activities and, you know, the contractors and that type of thing.
Right. And that was, that was, that was my initial thinking as well and that, that idea certainly hasn't gone away yet. I'm going to take a deeper dive in Design Management here in just a minute. And then when it comes to who you select as your selection, if you know someone who's, who's qualified, you may want to keep that in the back of your mind. Now, the, if you look at the, the bylaws for the.
It's not in the packet.
The bylaws? Okay.
Yeah, you're.
All right. So, so with the bylaws, there are some qualifications, but not that particular qualification. So if there's something that, I mean, as long as it falls within the bylaws, you're good. So anything beyond that is at your discretion.
Okay.
That answer that?
And we'll make sure we'll get copies of them.
They've got copies of.
I think you said you didn't have.
Not in my packet.
The application itself?
No.
You know, you should have bylaws that says new policy 6237 at the top, Bond Oversight Committee.
This is all emergency items.
That, that may be. Sorry about that.
We'll get them to you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm proceeding under a false assumption that you have the packet that I have in front of me, but I have packets for each of you.
You do an excellent job explaining it, even though we don't have a packet though, by the way.
You'll have it momentarily.
You'll have it momentarily.
Phil hit the nail on the head. I mean, what you have the facilities planner for is to work with this group and through the superintendent and his designate to, to ensure that all this is done in the correct manner.
So now, now I get why I kept getting those nods. I mean, those head shakes, no, it's not. And I'm like, I know I wrote it, it's in there, but okay. It's coming and you should have it any minute. I'm going to press on and then, and then I'll backtrack and it'll, it'll make a little bit more sense. But Mr. Leary, the, the bylaws for the BOC does list certain qualifications or suggests that you do have individuals who have a background and not just people who you may be friends with. So certainly that was brought into consideration. All right, so let's move on to the Design Advisory Committee. All right, what you see presented in front of you, other procedures for the Design Advisory Committee. And the first paragraph kind of sums up their responsibilities. The Design Advisory Committee for Putnam County School District will research crime prevention through environmental design standards and principles and recommend age-appropriate designs and concepts that are most conducive for teaching and learning. The committee will meet regularly with the architects to recommend and determine the feasibility of DAC design ideas and concepts. The committee will present to the school board in a regular meeting an annual report and outline their ideas and concept and designs for the school. The committee, and I'll go ahead and talk about the application process here just a little bit. It's a little bit different. This isn't just a community committee. It's made up of community and school members. The committee shall consist of 12 members appointed by the PCSD Executive Leadership Team and Superintendent. The team will consist of two students, two parents, two community members, and then two district office staff, two teachers, and then two school administrators. And, and the idea here is you want to have people who, you know, not just are concerned, community members overseeing how dollars are being spent, but people who are actually practitioners as well, who know or who should have a pretty good idea of what optimal learning spaces should look like. Someone who's actually in the profession itself to have some, some say within this. But it's the same, it's the same type model. The committee shall, well, I talked about the, the composition. But appointments for the committee shall be made for a three-year term and the members may be reappointed to successive terms as the PCSD Executive Leadership Team and/or superintendency fit. Each PCSD Design Advisory Committee will meet quarterly at a minimum per year. And unlike the BOC, which is a singular committee, there will be a DAC for every school, which just makes natural sense. And they'll serve for three years because once again, that's the expected time it'll take to complete the build of the school. And then we'll start over again.
If I could, could you tell me that composition again? You said.
Yes, ma'am. Two students, two parents, two community members, two district staff, two teachers, and two school administrators.
Thank you.
So in Phase One, Crescent City High, Junior Senior High School would have a.
DAC.
And Middleton Bernie would have a DAC.
That's correct. Somebody be on the bond element? I mean, the BOC and the DAC or be on two DACs? I wouldn't. I don't think there's anything in, in the rules that say you couldn't, but, but, you know, we're not talking about a ton of people here and that just gives different people opportunities to be a part of the process. I definitely wouldn't do that. Thank, thank you, Mr. Hestrom, I appreciate that. And you get that from Alice?
Yes.
That's it. I thought they were already placed up here ahead of time. But what you have in your packets are, and I have one just like it here. You've got the PowerPoint, you've got the, the bylaws for the Bond Oversight Committee. You have the Design Advisory Committee application. And then you have Design and Management Services scope of work. All right, I'm going to press on. All right, so I promised a closer look at what we mean by Design Management. And it's kind of a, it's almost a backup plan, if you will. If we don't get a project manager, I think we'll be okay. But we're still advertising for a project manager. So we may end up with both. And, and I kind of hope we do. But at a very minimum, I think we should be going this route. And this is, this idea was first presented to me as I was visiting some of my counterparts. Actually, it was my counterpart in Duval County who recently passed a referendum for sales tax, which is very significant there because of their tax base. But they're, they're essentially replacing schools and enhancing safety and security. And they have, he showed me everything they were doing and the specificity of everything that they were doing. And it just blew me away. And I, I felt like I was walking out of a mom and pop store and it is, you know, this grand place that, that has their stuff together and I felt tremendously underqualified. But, but then I said, did you create that? And he said, good lord, no. He said, you know, we, we have a, we contract with, with essentially someone for Design Management. And, and so I wanted to take a really deep dive on exactly how that works. So, you know, I've got the complete scope of work and I'm going to use, and that's in your packet, but it'll be infused into an RFP for someone to help us with that. But it's not an additional funding source. It's essentially a portion of what you would pay for architectural services anyway. And then it would, you would shave off a little bit of, or a small percentage of that to do this work and it's not someone who's essentially on the payroll, no salary and benefits. So let's talk about.
You can contract with a contractor, with a, an architect or an engineer to represent the school, you know, with respect to the construction process.
Exactly right.
And that might be the best bet.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right. So in addition to that, this is an opportunity to develop district standards that will be invaluable to the maintenance department going forward. The district can have continuity with all HVAC, electrical, low voltage, security, door hardware, interior finishes throughout the district. Furthermore, there may be an opportunity for bulk purchasing since the district will be direct purchasing most of the items to realize tax savings. The design manager shall provide conceptual site plans and building layouts. This determines if a school fits on a particular site and establishes how buses and cars will circulate on the site. This information will be used to determine proper site selection for future projects, particularly the next Palatka build. But one of the largest advantages to me is the design manager provides monthly status reports to the district and the board that includes project status updates for the design and construction of all ongoing projects, including schedules with anticipated milestones versus actual milestones and the cost of the projects compared to established budgets. Let me give you a example of what I'm talking about. All right, so this is an excerpt from Duval County's quarterly progress report. We're asking for monthly progress reports. And, and theirs is very comprehensive and I didn't pull all of it out, but I did pull just a few pages out so you could kind of get the gist of it. It has everything from contract awards and activations. It has a three-month look ahead with all of the projects listed. It has the financial status of the projects, the revenue collected, revenue projection, budget changes, et cetera, et cetera. That's all Rhonda's world. Here is planning, funding, and distribution. Their first, your first big, I guess, graph or circle graph up there to the left, theirs is broken down into a region. I could very easily see one of those colors representing the EH Miller Elementary School, one of those colors being the Miller Elementary and then the other being the special facilities, Crescent City Junior Senior High School. Their other is, it talks about whether it's being allocated to safety, security, safety and security, or if it's replacing a building. I can very easily see us doing something for demolition versus new builds. And then the, the, the funding source that's being used to fund those projects. What I do.
Just wanted to read.
Okay. All right, so it's back. All right, and so master program schedule, project stages, everything from procurement, design, et cetera, et cetera, demolition. And then it's each school site or each particular project has its own page. It not only has an image of what the, the final outcome is supposed to look like, there's typically an image of what it looks like right now in real time. There's general information there, approval milestones, schedule, scope, project status. And then there's always the financial component that's listed down on the bottom. And then at the very end, there's, there's a district dashboard that, that would have a summary of projects, funding, schedules, project maps, accessibility. And not only tells what's coming up, it tells, it gives, you know, where we should be at, you know, in a project based on where we are. And then it gives you a snapshot of how the, the dollars are being spent down to the literal penny in real time, which is, which is something that you could, any citizen could go to our website and access the information and see, and see exactly where we are on all of our projects and exactly the progress we've made and how much money we've spent in real time and, and stay that informed. All right, so what have we done so far as we get ready for construction? And it's kind of wrapping it up. Travis Woods is out working right now, completing the detailed, detailed custody reports for the EH Miller site and the Miller Middle site. And that's to determine which buildings will stay and which buildings will go. We've already gotten the recommended sites for Phase One of the project and I've, I've covered that already. We're in the process of either doing or about to have topographical surveys for each site. That was instrumental in doing away with a couple of buildings that we wouldn't have otherwise been able to do away with in Crescent City because the soil was bad down there. Hazard survey for each site and that's typically asbestos abatement. We intend to start that process in about March at, at both sites. As a matter of fact, the EH Miller sentence is not occupied by anyone right now. May happen a little bit before then. Geotechnical report, and that's where we take a look at the composition of the soil and materials to make sure it's adequate for new construction or if it's going to need any type of remediation. A demolition plan for each site and a timeline for that. And then again, conceptual plan for each site. And that will come as soon as we get Design Management in place. And again, we intend to post that RFP sometime this week. All right, that's all I got. Any questions?
I do. Specifically with the Melrose Elementary, you mentioned rebuilding there. Couple of questions, one has to do with the gymnasium. Is that going to be affected?
Absolutely. There's no way we're getting rid of that gymnasium down there. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a beautiful gym and, and that, that, that community is, is very proud of that gym. I've spoken to a lot of community members who have lots and lots of memories in that gym. And, and that's one of the, the recurring themes and recurring requests that I've heard again and again. If we're having a school here, which I know we are, can we keep this gym? And, and of course, it will be completely renovated. It'll be, it will look as it looks but new.
And, and the rest of the buildings that are on the, the elementary school campus?
Most will go.
Most will go.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Bolina, I just had a hope of clarification and, and just a question. So when, back at the beginning of your presentation, you said that the access to the EH Miller School would be Highway 19 and Round Lake Road, but you meant Davis Lake Road, right?
Davis, Davis Lake Road and, and Horseman's.
Horseman's Club, I'm sorry.
Davis Lake, you're right. Right, I did say Round Lake and I get them mixed up. But yes, sir, it's Davis Lake.
So I was talking to the superintendent a few weeks ago about possibly us retaining a easement off of 19 directly into the site. Is that still something that you're, they're going to be looking at?
Yes, sir. Absolutely. We don't have it yet, but, but, you know, that's something we are looking into.
And that's, you know, and I think along with that, I remember the conversation. You know, we want our architect, whoever the architect is, to look at that and look at traffic and all that because, you know, especially with Horseman's Club, that could be an issue with the traffic coming off of Davis Lake. So that's something we want them to look at and just give us some advice on.
And hopefully we'll hire as much local, these folks that come in and do construction, we'll hire as many local people as they can to, to.
You know, back to, back to fellow I met with at Duval, he, he showed me where they have embedded in some of their RFPs, the local talent has to be used. He has that, that language engineered, just a certain percentage of it anyway.
We've done that in past, in, in construction projects in past years. I don't know if the laws have changed. That's something that lawyers would have to advise us on, but I mean.
That's something that's very attractive sounding to me as well and I think, I hope it's, it's, it's doable and feasible. And, and, you know, we're able to stay on track and there's about, there's available talent. And, and, you know, so.
We're actually filling that with our Building and Construction Academy into Arkham Junior Senior High School. So hopefully we'll be turning those graduates out.
That sounds good.
And, and a follow-up question on the traffic circulation, transportation aspect. In Crescent City, we all, they're, part of that will be looking at, you know, bus route, parent pickup and that type of thing with respect to that because I guess it's, you know, as a professional land use planner, there's obviously community schools are what you want, but this is going to be a big community school.
Yes, sir.
Nine hundred students.
It is.
Yeah. So, so that's going to be important from the standpoint of developing downtown or redeveloping, you know, Crescent City that, you know, those trans. or redeveloping, you know, Crescent City, that, you know, those transportation and traffic circulation issues that will have to be, you know, addressed.
Absolutely, and I was having a conversation again with Travis a couple of days ago, and he brought up the exact point you're making right now, the architect is going to have to earn his money on that site down there when, in terms of stacking traffic and engineering.
They will love doing that, Travis.
Yes.
We've been, we've actually had a number of conversations. I know you've been talking to the mayor and the city manager down there, so, yeah, we're definitely on the, trying to stay on the pulse of that.
To make sure nothing that, that we do interferes with any projects they have moving forward with revitalization of downtown, particularly when it comes to liquor license and everything else. If there's a way we can engineer or even help them out with a little bit of property to make all of that become realized, we're certainly open to do what we can.
And it won't impact the existing licenses that are there, I mean.
Well, if anything, we're trying to open up possibilities for things that they don't currently have.
Right.
Any other questions for Mr. Bowlen?
Sorry about the packets.
I just look forward to getting a facilities planner.
Thank you, Thomas.
Ready and just getting on the road.
It's an exciting time, I tell you. And I tell people the bond passing is the easy part now. This is where it really gets difficult, all this stuff, so.
Do we have any cards for public comments? Do we receive any? All righty, we're ready to move into Item D, Public, excuse me, Public Hearing. All right, this is regarding the student parents' right, Policy Number 5780 per Neola. Neola, Florida Policy Special Update, May 2022.
Madam Chairman, I make.
Are we going to have to do?
I make, I make a motion that we adopt Policy Number 5780 per Neola, Florida Policy Special Update, May 2022.
Go ahead.
All right, moved by Mr. David, yeah, well, when I call the question, okay. Moved by Mr. David Buckles that we adopt Policy Number 5780 per Neola, Florida Policy Special Update, May 2022 and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Question and discussion at this time of that.
I was going to request that we pull that. I had some questions.
All right, that one is not under the consent agenda.
You can talk about it.
Yeah, but you can, so you can just talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to pull it, because it's not under consent agenda.
So you're, you may or may not be aware, but Neola is a group we contract with to keep our laws and policies consistent and congruent with state changes and stable.
Yes, and the information I was given earlier today, my concern is not over the entire document or the entire changes, but there are some changes that I believe Mr. Hedstrom said he could research a little bit more, but we're taking out, in one particular place, we're taking out the language that says that neither the board nor any agent or employee may require a student to wear a face mask. It talks about specific with face masks issues. And the language as it was in there said that no one can require a face mask. That's condensing it, but then we're taking that language out, and I'm not sure why, and I don't believe, it's not my understanding that it's related specifically to a statutory change.
You'd have to address the attorney and.
Oh, I read over that proposed change, and I didn't see any, any issues with it, but I can research that further if that's, I didn't realize it was something that you wanted more information on or.
Well, yeah, I just, I don't have, I realize who Neola is and, and that they do our, our changes based on the legislative changes, but I don't know of any legislative change myself that would take out the language saying that we cannot impose a mask mandate.
I would imagine the governor has probably slid that in somewhere, wouldn't you, Rick?
I would think it was in the legislation last.
Legislation?
Well, I think, I think the governor has said we cannot issue a mask mandate. That's basically what the language is saying, and they're taking it out.
I have to go back and redo it again.
Kind of a double negative.
Because I looked at it a few days ago, and it's not the most fresh in my mind. I don't have it in front of me.
Sure.
So I didn't read it that way. I, I thought it was actually removing the mask mandate possibility, but perhaps I, you know, I'll look it over again.
And I just have one other issue in this document, and I've apologized to at least two of our staff members because I'm a grammar Nazi, but I do take language very seriously as an attorney. I know you understand. The, they're making some changes with, with, instead of using the he slash, they're saying there, this is not that type of an issue, but it's about just making the language read better. I have no problem with the proposed changes, except that the changes have been made without looking at the rest of the sentences, and some of the sentences then don't make grammatical sense, and they're also not consistent. They're, they've changed it in certain locations and not in others. So I just, I kind of would like to see this be a little more consistent, and certainly coming from a school board, a little more grammatically correct. I think we need to set a standard for, for the district and our students.
Rick, let me ask you a question. As the fiscal agent for the Northeast Florida Consortium, and you being the chairman, because of that, Neola handles all of the district, the NEFAC districts updates, I would think, wouldn't you?
I couldn't, I couldn't answer that. I'm not sure if they do all the districts.
They don't?
There's some that are not, a few.
Okay, all right, I just, that's news to me.
But as a matter of procedure here.
What we can do is, is table it, Madam.
That's what I was going to suggest.
Madam Attorney, let's just table Item D1, and then.
Good deal.
If you, Mrs. Superintendent and the attorney would look into that.
Do they need to go ahead and vote to table that?
Yeah.
Yes, so.
I'll retract my second. You retract your motion and make a new motion?
So I motioned to table the.
Yes.
The Item D1.
And I withdraw my motion.
Right.
Okay.
And so in seconding?
All right. Who, who did second?
I think Phil is the second.
Okay, yes, because he went to pull him. Yes, and then you seconded.
I motioned that we approve it. She pulled it, I think, isn't that correct?
After Phil had seconded.
After Phil has seconded.
So he rescinded his second.
Okay.
And then you withdrew your motion, yes.
Now we need a new motion to table.
So now we're ready, so now we need to vote, just let it go and let Ms. Wagner.
Now, Ms. Wagner, you made the new motion.
I made the new motion.
But no one seconded.
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, it's been motion by Mrs. Wagner that we table Item D1 and second by Mr. Buckles. Any further discussion? All in favor? Let it be known by aye. Aye, motion carries.
So our attorney will research that and bring that back to our next meeting. Is that okay?
Yes.
And by the way, just a little housekeeping, if you ever have any questions about any of the agenda items, of course, our staff is available, but we also, our board attorney is your board attorney. She also works with us too, but we, we can establish some, you know, procedures on how you can get in contact with her about questions and that's perfectly fine, and we want you to.
And I do apologize for some of this, those items were kind of a little last minute for me this week, and I certainly don't intend on waiting till the last moment to ask questions as a habit.
Yeah, yeah, we just want to, yeah, we want to make sure you get timely information, so, yeah, and if in doubt, call Susan, and she'll tell you who to call.
I've learned that very quickly.
Been a while since we've had an attorney on the board. I told you earlier, your, your advice will come in handy.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. All right, Item Two, Adoption of Policy Numbers 8100 and 8660. The first one deals with et alocca agreements, and the 8660 deals with alternative transportation method per Neola, Update Volume 23, Number One, June 2022. All right.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Policy Numbers 8100 and 8660.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we adopt Policy Number 8100 and 8660 per Neola update, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Open for discussion, there are none. All right, all in favor? Let it be known. Oh, we need to do the whole.
Oh, yes, sorry, I was.
All right, so you're going to take them one at a time? Okay.
Yes, yes, roll call. Yes, District One.
Adopt.
District Two.
Adopt.
District Three.
Adopt.
District Four.
Adopt.
And District Five.
Adopt.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you just took them all together as opposed to 8100 and then 8, 8, 8660.
Yeah, it was in this thing.
Okay, just one, okay. All righty, thank you so much again for your tenderness to handling the affairs of our district. At this time, we are ready for our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I see Mr. Hedstrom here. I, I would like to pull G9 just for discussion.
G9, discussion. Pickens, okay. Mr. Buckles?
I'd like to pull N1, easement request.
That's on discussion business.
Well, let's send new business.
Yes, so that's.
Okay, all right, well, that'll be, that'll be later then.
So yours will be taken care of, so you have.
I have none, no matter.
Okay, all right. Mrs. Wagner?
I have none.
Okay. Mr. Leary?
H4, just for a comment.
All right, H4. And I'm going to pull F11 just for information for all of us, and F3 is just a question. F3 is just a question, so I'm pulling that one as well to ask a question that I didn't get an opportunity today to ask.
Sure.
Okay, we're ready, we'll start with.
And, oh, Mr. Hedstrom.
I'll make a motion that we accept the consent agenda minus F3, F11, G9, and H4.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept the consent agenda minus F3, F11, G9, and H4, second by Mr. David Buckles. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, motion carries. Okay, we'll start with F3, just, just merely a question. I read the Putnam Edge statement, and it was for September 22. This is just wrap-up money or something, because I.
That's correct. You'll have one more coming. Their accountants are still on staff.
Okay.
You're still just trying to get everything taken care of.
The books closed now.
Any outstanding bills paid? We were hoping there would be money left over at the end when they finally shut everything out, because that money comes back to the district.
Yes, ma'am.
But I have already received the October statements just the other day, and I think I forwarded it to the superintendent. They ended, they, they're finally closed out, and the accountants are no longer on staff, and they ended the year, I think, with about a $10,000 deficit. The school district does not have to make that up because we're not liable for their debts, but their board, the foundation board, the Edge Foundation Board will have to take care of that, but you'll be seeing one more financial statement come through that's going to show that negative amount, and then I think we have closed everything out. There's nothing else left for us to do to meet our requirements, so.
Thank you so much.
I'll stay here if you want me to for the next one.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Leary, I know you and I talked about that, did that answer all your questions?
Yes, it did, yeah, and that's what I saw, that I thought that they were going to be in the, in the red, and, but I also knew that we wouldn't be responsible for, but yes, thank you.
All right.
I'll come to you at the next board meeting.
Since I am the one that pulled Item F3 and F11, do I actually call, I mean, motion that we now approve F3, and then it just goes just as if, okay, all right, I make motion, I move that we accept Item F3?
Second.
All right, it's been motion and second that we accept Item F3, all right?
Do you all need to vote then on it?
All right, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes here and none. Motion carries. All right, F11 is for explanation, if you help us, help me to understand.
Okay, this is a contract to employ the services of a company known as Debtbook. We mainly looked at this because of the new GASB pronouncements that came out, the GASB 87 and the GASB 96 pronouncements. They have to deal with debt and lease management and accounting standards compliance. We didn't have any type of tool in place for lease management for the GASB 87. When they released GASB 87, it's the new lease accounting standard for government entities, and it has to be implemented in this current fiscal year, and it, it recognized, it required recognition of certain lease resources, assets and liabilities for leases that were formerly classified as operating leases, and recognizes inflows and outflows of resources is now considered leases as financing of the right to use underlying asset. What this calls into play in a governmental entity like the school district, since we don't lease buildings or vehicles or anything like that, is for copier leases mainly. We have, I don't even know how many copiers we have in the district. Each school has several. This building probably has 10 or 15, and now it's going to be recorded that we have to recognize a lease liability and a lease asset at the beginning of the lease term, at the present value of payments expected to be made during the lease term, and we would have to reduce that lease liability as payments are made each month. And then we have school districts, even like on today's agenda, I think there was one principal trading in one copier for another one, and that's going, that's going to involve all kind of different accounting that has to be done for that, and we've got no method of keeping track of any of this right now, so Debtbooks will do so. They upload information out of the Skyward system. They'll probably work with purchasing at times to get different purchase orders and everything, and they'll provide us with at year-end, actually journal entries that we will actually input into our system that will take care of all of this for us. And GASB 96 is called Subscription-Based Information Technology Arrangement, known as SBTA's, and this, it established, GASB established Uniform Accounting and Financial Reporting Requirements, also to incorporate this fiscal year, which would look at any information technology software that the district uses and the way to handle that and put it in our financial statement. That could be things like Skyward, it could be things like, IT might use other type of software, NEFAC, us being their fiscal agent, I don't know how much software they also have, so Debtbook will help us work through that process. But we started looking at this, like I said, two, several months ago, because we knew these GASB standards were coming into play this fiscal year, but they can also help us in the bonds. We've talked to them about that, so it'll be even more of a resource now, because it's a software system that helps track our different debt offerings as well as these lease assets. We can use it for budgeting, payment tracking, projecting what the debt service will be, confirming upcoming debt payments, the balance of each individual bond issue, because we're not going to do it all at one time, so we can make sure that we comply with disclosure and reporting requirements, so. It seemed to be a very reasonable cost, and, you know, we'll do it for one year, and if it does what it's expected to do and everything, we'll probably ask for a renewal of the contract, but we've got high hopes for it, and we think it'll help our staff tremendously with these new requirements that are in place.
All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And you let your assistant know that he did a thorough job.
Thank you, I'll let him know.
All righty, I move that we accept Item F11, oh.
I'm sorry, and I just had one additional comment to make about it. The contract, the general terms and conditions, there's a choice of submission into jurisdiction provision in it where it allows any disputes about this contract to be brought up in any state or federal court within the state of Florida, and usually I know the district likes to include in the contracts that any disputes that are brought to the legal system be in the circuit court here in Putnam County, the State Court of Public, Putnam County. So I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention, that you all could perhaps request to amend that provision if you wish to restrict litigation to Putnam County.
Okay, Mr.?
I think in the past, we've marked through that on the contract before you sign it and everything, and, you know, as long as they accept it like that, we'll go forward with it, but now I have to bring something else that you said.
Okay, and so you're going to take into consideration what they. And so you're going to take into consideration what the attorney said before it's signed, okay?
I've literally already marked it on my one copy.
We'll direct our superintendent to get with the attorney and get that straightened out to limit our liability.
So you're voting on this minus with that language taken out?
That's correct.
Yes, yes.
I'll second.
Thank you so much.
You made a motion.
A motion.
I'll second it.
You second, alright, all in favor? We've had our discussion, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes here are none, okay? We are now ready for G nine, the session.
Mr. He, I think this is a great idea, so I just really wanted to highlight it.
Okay, as you all know, we have three therapists that work within our mental health for our students. We also have a social worker and two guidance counselors that work throughout our district. We also have in all our elementary schools and our middle and high schools, except for QI Roberts, we have ripple effects. Where the kids, if I'm having anxiety or so, and I can go on the computer and work within ripple effects, and it gives me suggestions, ideas, and so on, things to work through that. Or my parents are going through a divorce, and I will need someone. This program does. QI Roberts was not utilizing it, and I was paying for it, so I did take those licenses and give them to elementary schools that were asking for it. QI, as you know, has a lot of issues with that, so I talked with Joe and their counselor, and so I've been looking for another type of program that works with mental health, and was able to get ahold of this company that is piloting this. I met with Joe, our lead counselor, Mr. Stevens, the CEO of the company, and we've had several meetings with, it's called Alongside, and it's actually can be used as an app on the phone, or it can be used on the computer where the kids could type in. You know, if I'm thinking about doing self-harm, this computerized program would give me ideas, exercises, things that I could do to release from that, but it also, if I type something in there that is, I'm gonna do harm to others, or if I'm gonna do harm to myself, it automatically lets the school counselor, administrative, know that they need to see that kid as quick as they possibly can. What we're trying to do is put as many resources in our students' hands at this time because our therapists are maxed at this time of the year, and November, they were already maxed with clients where they could not take anymore. So this is a program that helps in a lot of our schools, you know, guidance counselors are doing a lot more, a lot less of seeing kids and a lot more of a lot of other things that they're, they're required, that they have to do, that are required by the state. So this is just another instrument that we've tried to put resources in our kids' hands to keep our kids mentally strong, and so they can be academically successful.
I just want to ensure that they don't get bad advice, and that if they are thinking of something very serious, that it'll red flag to the counselors and the principal of staff.
It lets the administration know and the counselors know that there's something going on. It also gives the counselors ideas about what the kids have said. It also has a spot on there where their parent can go in and look at that also, meaning, and the parent does have to, you have to sign consent.
Okay, that, that was my question.
Goes back to the fifteen fifty-seven.
Yes.
And we have on our computers in Skyward has every child that has, that their parent has not signed consent. It lists, there's a little mark there on the Skyward that tells you that child is not, you're not able to give them Band-Aids, ice, mental health, you have to call the parent for so on that. So that's a, we, all the others are allowed to be able to do that. They're protected from that fifteen fifty-seven.
Yes, and it's voluntary for child ops not to put this on his or her phone, or don't even have a phone.
Yes, and it's a pilot, it's a pilot, so we're, we're getting an opportunity for no cost to work with this company to build this, so, and it's nationwide. This is not just us. It is utilized nationwide, and it's a chance and opportunities for us to give suggestions. The kids can give suggestions on how to better it, but we as administrators and counselors can also give them suggestions saying it works or it doesn't work.
And one of the bullets, I think, said, it even pinpoints where I am. Memory serves me correctly.
So if you're wanting to do self-harm.
Self-harm, it kinda will, will notify them, if I read it correctly.
If that is your phone, yeah, yeah.
I think I read that.
That GPS stuff. It's hard to hide from anybody these days.
Charlie, Big Brother.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Alright, if you will.
I make a motion that we accept item G nine, the MOU for Alongside.
I second.
Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item G nine alongside the app, alongside, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Any further discussion? Alright, ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, motion carries. Alright, H four.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I just had a quick comment in, to Laura France and, and the staff at QI Roberts. And I got real excited when I saw the trip included a, a, a visit to the Salvador Dali Museum. And I can tell you, if you haven't been there, and I have, I, I, I went right after it first opened. It is an incredible experience, and these kids will just be, I think it'll be a phenomenal trip for them. I'm a strong component of the arts, and as we saw at the beginning of the meeting, there's a lot of opportunity, and it brings a lot of, a lot of good things. So congratulations to them, and I can't wait to hear how they, what their comments are about the museum. Thank you, ma'am. And I'll move approval of, of H four.
I'll second.
Alright. G, G four.
H four.
H four, Mr. Leary moved approval, approval of item H four, second by Mrs. Holly Pickens. All in favor, well, any further question? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes here are none, okay? We are now out of regular session into emergency session. Okay, item one under emergency twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, personnel allocation change number fifteen, fifteen point one through fifteen point three. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion. We approved L one, twenty twenty-two, two, twenty twenty-three, personnel allocation change number fifteen, fifteen point one dash fifteen point three. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I second.
Move by Mr. David Buckles that we accept item L one, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens, discussion? Alright, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes, none. Item two, some.
I make a motion that we accept item L two, the addendum to extend agreement with ESS Northeast LLC. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Second.
Alright, motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L two, and second by Mr. Phil Leary. Any questions, comments? Alright, discussion here are none. We're ready to vote. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes here are none, our motion carries. This is a great, great service, I tell you, because executive secretaries will swamp trying to find personnel when we have people out, so that was great.
We ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, item L three, reimbursement resolution, I would move approval and justification, explanation being that it's a time-sensitive matter.
I second.
Alright, move by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item L three, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens, any discussion? None, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes, none.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to accept the item L four, the Bond Counsel Engagement Letter for Continuing Service Fee Arrangement and Disclosure Counsel Retainer. Agreement, justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I'll second that.
Motion. Motion by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept item L four, and second by Mr. David Buckles, question?
Question, Madam Chairman. So, Mr. Superintendent and Madam Attorney, I see where we have Bond Counsel, Neighbors Giblin, who I'm very familiar with, and also Gray Robinson, and I was just curious, is that? Oh, I'm sorry, Greenberg, Chrog, I get them all, they run together. So, is that, I mean, usually, the bonds that I've been affiliated with, Neighbors Giblin handled the whole process, and including, you know, what Greenberg Chrog has laid out in their contract. I'm sorry, I didn't get with you about that yesterday, but I was, I was reading it again this morning. I'm just curious, is that normal practice?
Well, I'm actually not familiar with the backgrounds of how their bond resolutions, such as the districts, are normally handled, whether it's two separate attorneys or, or one that's handling the whole process, but the district had.
Well, and Rhonda, if you have any comments on this, but we've actually, you know, we've worked with them at, starting, what, a year and a half ago, and, and has guided this, and actually, the, the next phase of this is really important. We actually met with them in a Zoom call, what, last week? Right, and, and just talked about the next phase of this. This is, there's a phase, and help me out, Rhonda, it's called like an appeal. It's an appeal period, and what it does, it actually, there's a time limit where if anybody disagrees with the bond. Validation, and once that period is over with, which would be like in March, is that correct? You know, after that, then there is no more appeals towards the bond referendum.
It moves forward.
Right, it moves forward. So it is, it's a building process, but we, we definitely need the guidance of the bond attorneys.
I'll back up just a little bit.
Sure.
Back when we were told we had to have bond counsel in order to even put this on the referendum. Lex was working with us, and he got a list of names of people who were bond counsel. He interviewed all of them, and he presented to the executive team, you know, his recommendations, and I spoke to some of the finance officers who had done bond counsels, and we all as a team decided on Greenberg, which was also Lex, who was here with Carol, was his top recommendation. So, you know, I'm thinking that he was going to do everything.
Right.
But now he tells us that we have to have the disclosure counsel. He doesn't do that.
Right, and so, and that's what I was trying to understand. I want to make sure I understood it. The Greenberg is our bond counsel.
That's correct.
For our process, and then Neighbors Giblin is administering the bond process and issuance of the bond. Is that correct? That's my understanding. Okay, wow, I can't believe it. Thank you, Rhonda.
Is that good?
Yes, ma'am, that's good, yeah, I just, I just want to make it sure.
If I can clarify one additional item, is this, this agreement shall become effective from the first, the date first written above through June twentieth of twenty-four. So is that, is that what we're talking about? You're talking about the?
Which contractor are you referring to?
The, I'm sorry, the Neighbors Giblin.
Yeah, I believe that covers the timeframe when the bonds are supposed to be issued initially.
Okay, so I, I heard something about March of this coming year or something.
And that, that is.
That's for the appeal.
The appeal process, Rhonda, what's the terminology for that?
That was the validation.
The validation period, right.
Okay, different, different.
Yeah, different thing.
So our term with Neighbors Giblin is going to be through June of twenty-four.
Yeah, that's your line, it said June twentieth, it probably was June thirty at the end of the fiscal year, but then it said maybe renewable each year, so each is doing it one year at a time.
Do we have any idea at this point if it's going to be?
I would assume this one has to continue on because.
Throughout the entire process?
Says his is based on each bond sale, and says we're only doing, you know, for the two schools at first bond sale, it might be a couple of years before we do another bond sale. I'm not sure of the timing or anything, so we would still need bond counsel and disclosure counsel at that time.
So Neighbors, yeah, Neighbors Giblin is the preeminent law firm in the state that, working with bond issues for, for governmental entities.
Okay.
And I've been really impressed with Red Fish. I've met him for different times. He's along with Neighbors Pickens.
Alright, any further discussion, and we thank you for the discussion. It is helpful.
Yeah, these are great questions.
It's great.
Thank you for asking.
No problem whatsoever. Alright, any further question? Are we ready to vote? Alright, all in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye, opposes here are none, our motion carries. We are now out of emergency session, and we are, we have no unfinished business, so there is no M. We are now within, and I think that was the discussion that you were, no, Mr. Buckles. Was concerned about the new business, alright?
I, I've been hearing and keeping up with on and off a piece of property that we have that borders the school bus road to ingress and egress for the buses at Interlock and High School, and we have a representative here from the Hansford family, and that, my, my concern is, you know, we don't really know or didn't know a whole lot about what was proposed to come, but we heard rumors, and rumors seem to be accurate, that it's going to be a, an auto parts dealership with paperwork's been filed with the county, and y'all correct me if I'm wrong, and I, I just, I'd like, I know this, this request came from the Hansford Huntley family, is that correct? And I would prefer to, to maybe get with the attorney, and this is just for you guys. You guys can overrule me or override me, let our attorney maybe work with the superintendent and see if there's a way that we can deal with the proposed owners of, who want the property. Because we don't really know at this point exactly what their plans are, and they've kind of, I feel like, and Dawn, you're welcome to come up, or you can stand there and talk if it would be better.
I have a representative with the fire.
Okay.
Does it answer any questions?
Well, we'd love for him to come up and identify himself for the record, address. Come up, come up over here to the microphone, and you'll have to give your name and address.
While he's coming up.
Do y'all have a packet of the site plan that? Well, we're, we're so early in the process, we don't really have.
Yeah, I think there's a task in online, but, but, doesn't the school board or the school, the district have a seat on the Development Review Committee for the county?
If they do, I don't know.
They're supposed to have, I mean, that's under statute, so we, we should have a representative that attends those DRC meetings.
I have a small one, but yeah, this is a lot better.
Be our representative on this, this exact type of thing.
Mr. Harvey approached me regarding it, but just, it was game.
Well, and while he's passing this out, you know, the, the Hansford Huntley families have been involved in education in Putnam County for decades, many years.
You can give my copy.
And. Thomas needs a copy.
And paid taxes and done so many things. I even looked at this property when I was school superintendent years ago, and they were so tied up with the, the families were combined that Dawn's father didn't want to, or couldn't sell it at the time, or didn't want to. And, you know, the district has looked at purchasing this in past years, so, I mean, we just need to know a little more about it, and then we need to. To kind of, my recommendation would be to let them, the attorneys look at it and then get with you guys. Yeah, whatever. Go ahead, you'd have to.
My name is Ty Taylor. I'm a real estate development rep for AutoZone.
Address and where you live, I'll look at.
Okay, I'm at three zero eight Woodbridge Lane. You know what, I probably ought to give you the corporate address instead of my office. Corporate address is one, two, three South Front Street, Memphis, Tennessee, three eight one zero three.
Tennessee.
I'm actually out of Pennsylvania, and tell you what, it was nice coming here yesterday from twenty-two degrees to seventy degrees.
I'm freezing, I'm freezing to death right now, so, not right now, but.
Basically, we're seeking a variance of roughly two hundred feet from Highway twenty up school bus lane. As you can see in front of you, we have laid out our building on the piece of property that Mr. Hans owns. We have met with Florida DOT. We have talked to them about access on two twenty. They prefer for safe. They prefer, for safety reasons, access off of school bus lane.
Well, and it, it wouldn't meet their access management plan, so there's no way you're going to get a, an, a driveway permit into that, so, you, I mean, this is, it's either this, or they don't build it. I mean, isn't that correct? I mean, they've.
Yes, they, they said for safety reasons, people coming in, coming out, and, you know, they also did, you know, I'm kind of jumping ahead here, but they also did say that development on this site does make it safer for buses coming off of school bus lane, just because there is further sightlines.
Okay. Well, and that's why, a long time ago, we looked, we looked at the property as well, so, I, I, I think that, my concern here is that, that, that it, I, I would like to see the, maybe table it, and, and have the attorneys meet with, meet with the representative, and, and try to see if there's, what kind of solutions, what they're planning, more so than what we're just looking at here, because it, you know, in our heart of hearts, we, we'd like to help the people that we know locally.
Right.
But, you know, we at the same time have, we have to look through some other, you know, concerns that we have with ingress and egress, and, and granting access.
And I, I do have some answers to some of those. Mr. Hanford had relayed to me of some of the potential concerns about, okay, school buses are coming out in the morning, they're coming back in the afternoon, customers, for example, how many trips a day? This store is not going to be like a store that sits in Philadelphia, Atlanta, or northern New Jersey, that has 200 to 300 trips a day. The store will make money, it will do well, but it's not going to be, you know, packed 24/7. We're looked during the weekday, anywhere between six to 80 trips a day, and that's over a 12-hour period, so what's that, five, six people in and out per hour? The weekend is our busiest time, we could, that could be 80 to 90 trips on the weekend. And we have this data, because we do look at what time sales come in. Historically, our sales across the country, we just opened our 7,000 store, 7,000 store last week, the sales are typically from 5:30 till we close. Every now and then, you get a rainy day, somebody's windshield wipers don't work, somebody is in there at, you know, 8, 8:30, 8:45, 9 o'clock in the morning going to work. But typically, our sales are on the weekends and at the end of the workday.
When does your delivery?
Delivery truck on a store like this will have one delivery a week. There is no set time, and there's no set day. Only thing I can tell you is during the week, there will probably be two to three employees in the store. Two to three employees cannot take the merchandise that's delivered and get it on the shelf and properly service customers, so that truck more than likely, not guaranteed, more than likely would be there on a Saturday where there's five employees, Saturday or Sunday where there's five employees.
Yeah, I drove to the store. I drove to town to pick up you, John, for somebody yesterday at AutoZone, and I hear that, why?
Mr. Leary has.
Well, I do want, I do want to, I think there are some legal questions, I mean, I think it's great, I mean, I think it's a great addition to, to the community of Interlock.
I just.
My main concern is I want to make sure on access, especially with that being a bus access and all that, that our attorney has an opportunity to review that, and maybe have a conversation with him, and maybe, I think Mr. Buckles mentioned, table this until we have.
Part of the, part of my goal here, Rick, is that, I think we might find common ground here and be able to work a solution, but, you know, in, in a few, some years from now, when we go to doing construction in Interlock and High, we're not sure where we'll take the school buses out of that property. So, that whole thing can change, and, but, but I just think the lawyer, and, and we need to table it and look at that end of it, because we, I, you know, I've had all their kids in school, and I know them very well, and with my heart hurts, I'd like to help them, but.
Right.
At the same time, you guys need to deal with us, and, and.
Right, I mean, we want it to be right, too. We're making a serious investment in Interlockin.
Sure.
To date, we've spent roughly $70,000, and all we do, all we have to show is it's under contract, we have a Phase 1, we have some of our due diligence done, we've already started meeting with the FL DOT, we do have prelim plans, so, we've, we've spent money and looking to make a, you know, investment in this community.
Chair recognizes Mr. Leary.
And FYI, we do have, the next board meeting is January 10th, is that correct? So that we could, if the attorney could meet with, with your representative or you, and just work out the details, then, Madam Chair, we could bring that, bring that back up to the board.
Yes.
If you so choose to table this.
Yes, table recognizes Mr. Leary.
Sure, yeah, I, I, in full disclosure, Commissioner Larry Harvey asked me, actually, before I took office, to come out there and meet with him, and I also met with Mr. Helms, the, this, the principal. As a former, former county planning director, there's a process for all this, and this would go through the county development review committee before any permit was issued or anything was approved, and it would look at not only school impact, traffic circulation, you know, drainage, a whole host of things under the county's land development code. But the bottom line is, whether they build a store here, or, or a, a house, there's no easement. I mean, the, the, the school board basically maintain, owns that road, which is unusual, honestly, off of, you know, to have a direct access off of State Road 20 owning, owning that road. And there's already precedent been set by, by the school district years past, allowing for an easement for residences there. I don't have any problem with tabling it, I mean, it's a pretty straightforward, but they cannot get, because the state hasn't adopted access management plan for State Road 20, and they only allow so many curb cuts, and that's for flow of traffic on, on a major arterial highway. So, they need the easement in order to build the store, and so, it really is not so much of a legal question to me, is that, you know, and he talked about, you know, their, AM and PM peak hour traffics, and that's, you know, morning and afternoon, which would be outside the timeframe of the school operation.
Correct.
So, it's, it's, it's more detail, but if, if you don't have a problem waiting, I, as I understood from, from Commissioner Harvey, that there was a, a contract in place and with a time element on it. But, and the other thing, Mr. Superintendent, is that we definitely need somebody, if they're not anybody from the school district, you know, attending and participating in the development review committee, I mean, there's, you know, things happening all over the county that, that could impact us, so, anyway.
And we can get with, you know, their county administrator and.
Yeah.
Work on, maybe, have one of our board members attend that, so we can get.
And it seems easy, it's, it seems really easy, I mean, because it seemed like a no-brainer, but we need to meet, we need our council to look at some other options that might, we might request of the AutoZone folks, if we were to approve this. So, I mean, there's a, Rick and I briefly had a conversation today about, you know, who knows, put out, pay for a safety guard during the peak hours of ingress and egress, or, you know, I, I don't know, there's all kind of things, but we don't want to hamper the community not being able to have legitimate competitive auto sale.
Oh, yeah, I mean, we're, we're excited about that, we just want to make sure.
We just, we just got, I just think we need to, I, I don't know how long your timeline is that you need on this, but I wish you'd just give her time to get with you.
Understand where you're coming from, we do have it under contract with Mr. Hanford. We're going to have, probably have to get an extension, because we can't move any fore, I mean, our engineers are ready to go. But without this, this is a no-deal for us. We walk, we go to the next town.
Well, once you get.
Well, and there's nothing, there's nothing saying we could not, once you, we go through this process, if, if time would, if time's of the essence, we could possibly, after talking to the chair, maybe call a special meeting, if necessary. I mean, we want to.
Yeah, I'm actually out of Pennsylvania, I booked this ticket to shoot down here last night on Sunday, so, it's kind of, it's back and forth. The board attorney gave her my card, I was going to, I didn't want to interrupt, the microphones pick everything up. If you would like, I could get the engineer and myself on the phone. I'm not an engineer, I don't want to profess to be an engineer, but they have a lot better answers than I do.
So, so, can I ask a question? So, and, and maybe, maybe I need to come in and meet with you and understand specifically, you know, what the concerns are, I mean, with, we, we use that road for something other than.
Thomas, could you come up to the mic, and, and I know that you and I have discussed this, and maybe help answer?
I mean, the, what the county, what Commissioner Harvey wanted was for the school board to deed that road to the county, which I told him I didn't think that would happen, but.
That's a major bus.
Yeah, bus route.
Yeah, and the only other questions that I have would be attorney's question, which revolve around liability, and I understand that there are some existing homes that are already there, but there is, I mean, it is, our, our bus employees, bus compound employees enter and exit there, cafeteria employees, some of the school-based personnel enter and exit there, not many children, but we do have several buses exiting in the afternoons. You know, if, if we can be resolved, or at least reassure that the, the prospect of litigation on us is low, you know, because of some type of accident or something, I, I, I think that's what the superintendent is alluding to. Outside of that, I, I think it's a great opportunity for the town of Interlockin, and, and it there, and, and there's, Mr. Leary reminded me of something I should have already known, and that's past practice, I mean, there is existing residents living back there using that road right now. We haven't had any issues.
They used to have access down the hill to where Ace Hardware is, but they don't have that anymore, so.
Yes. Can I ask our attorney, any questions you have, or timeframe, I mean, I want to, you're representing us in this, I want to make sure, can you give us your, your idea about, I know his concern is about time and the contract and so forth, so, is that something that we need to talk about now, or are you feeling okay about that?
Well, what timeframe are you looking at with your contract? And then, you know.
I don't have it in front of you, well, I'm just, I'm trying to think.
How long are you under contract for, Dawn?
We're not even through our.
We got an extension clause in there, we will use that. Well, I got, do you hear me? We got an extension clause, we will use that.
Yes.
But while I got the floor, again, y'all didn't get a copy of this?
We got a much smaller copy, there was a copy.
Yeah. There was a packet. I had a little packet for the.
Yeah, we, yeah, they got it.
And you guys would have a copy. And there's some concessions on there, they were putting on there, that they would maintain that portion of the road, and, you know, that's a way to win.
Well, I, I'm optimistic that they would, they would be great advocates for the school, I just think if, we just need to clear it up, maybe Carol, get with Charlie and talk to him a little, and discuss it, and, and let Rick weigh in, and get back to us.
And we can do this.
And if we have to hold an emergency meeting to, to meet the contract, and either yay it or nay it, then we.
If we need to do something before January 10th, and we can, you know, if, if this been negotiated and resolved, then we'll wait and hear from our attorney.
You know, sooner the better, I, I know that's not what anybody wants to hear, but I understand this is not the only thing on y'all's plate, but just, you know, in consideration that the earliest you could get it on would be most appreciated.
Sure.
So, I'm, I'm not saying tomorrow, next week, January 10th, or whenever.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll default to our attorney, and whenever she or Charlie lets us know, reassures us that it's good to go, then we can, if we need to, we'll call a special meeting, and otherwise, if not, we'll, we'll do it on January 10th, but, but I'll leave it up to our attorney to let us know.
We could perhaps arrange a telephone meeting this Thursday or so, I'll check with other.
Yeah, that'd be great, I'm actually, I, I fly back in the morning, so I'll, I will be in the office. If you do have a special meeting, I'm, let me ask you this question, could.
Yes.
Could mine be via Teams or Zoom versus, okay, yeah.
We've done that before.
Okay.
Yeah. And, and as long as our board agrees to do that, but, you know, we can, we've done that before.
I mean, well, we would love to agree, and we've done it.
Okay.
Yes, sir. All right. Any further discussion before we get, we move to table? All right, go ahead, Mr. Leary.
Okay, I, I can't support that, I mean, I just think that's adding way too much bureaucracy, and there's a process, like I said, to approve this. They don't get anything automatically from the building department, from the county, until they meet all that, and our input would be part of that, and as far as an easement, I'm not practicing law, but, I mean, it's a common practice, and basically, the, the property's useless without an easement irregardless, so, anyway, that's just my comments.
And, you know, as far as uses that are approved for that piece of property, we are less traffic-intensive than, say, a Taco Bell, a Chick-fil-A, or anybody else.
Um, being a little bit unfamiliar, I mean, I've ridden down this road on many a bus, but the houses that are using it, where are they in relation?
We've allowed them, they're, they're east of the road.
Yes, ma'am, right there.
And we've allowed them to use this over the years.
And has that ever been a problem?
Well, I think they have a, I think they have a legal easement, I mean, it's not, we allowed them to, I think there's an easement.
We've run title, there's no easements to that road.
If I remember, I think, when I was, back in the day, when dinosaurs walked the earth, and I was school superintendent, I granted a family easement to that road years ago, but I, I don't know that that's, if I remember correctly, it might have been down the other road, but we've had people in the community there work with us, as AutoZone would, as a good community partner, I'm sure. But I just think there's a couple of unanswered questions that, that we can take care of with, Carol, get with Charlie and Rick and, and Thomas, and see what we can do to find common ground.
If you were, if you were motion to table it.
Well, I, I haven't, no, no. Okay, so, is this design set in stone, like, how, how many, in your opinion, how many school buses could be waiting to turn on 20 before they block in this entrance, or it comes, sort, you see what I'm saying? Like, is this entrance?
What's a school bus? 52 feet long?
Roughly.
Roughly up to the property line here is 200 feet, so, your, your four school buses that would block the whole thing.
Yeah.
But what time do your school buses leave? That's, I mean, there's, I, I understand the concern that, yeah, the school buses are going to be blocking there. If we, as a retailer, who make our money selling auto parts, were concerned that our customers, I mean, if this was Greyhound, we'd say no, because the buses are coming and going all day long. Being that it's a school, they're in the morning, they're in the afternoons, during sports, they're various times throughout the night. We, as a business, don't see an issue. You know, we could even put up signs here for people, you know, yield to the bus, I don't know who would try to challenge a school bus, but we could still put up the, the signs there. But, you know, it, it's not an issue to us. Obviously, we want our customers to have, you know, easy ingress, ingress off the site, but because of the times that the buses run, and the times our customers, the busiest times of the store, don't coincide, then we're, we're not concerned about it.
Well, in the discussion with our attorney, there may need to be some understandings about, I mean, you mentioned signage and that type of thing, there may need to be some, you know, preliminary discussions about, you know, we need to make sure we have such and such in place, so that doesn't happen, you know, as far as, whatever that looks like, and I understand Ms. Pickens' concern is, you know, we don't want to interrupt any of that bus flow either.
Mm-hmm.
So, just to make sure there's some, something in place to, you know, indicate to people coming in, maybe. coming in, maybe, you know, bus, you don't walk the driveway, or bus traffic happens between this time and that time, and...
You guys may be the best partners we ever had in the school system. But let's, let's let the attorneys, let's table it for a few days and let them go through whatever's been presented to the county in these maps and this information's been given us, and then give us a little more advice.
And we can move on once you make the motion, and we'll see if any further discussion...
Well, I make a motion, we table it, this until such time as the attorneys can meet along with superintendent, designated staff, to bring back recommendations to us.
And I will, providing that is what you decide. After you, if you will report to Susan and myself when you feel as resolved, we'll put it on the agenda.
And I don't even mind if the school bus comes across the driveway, because it's not going to be there that long.
Three days. And then we, if we need to do a special meeting, or if it takes longer, then we do the next regulations. But we'll wait till y'all.
All right, I was gonna say, if we die, all right.
I mean, this is three minutes until they've already turned on to 20.
It's been moved by Mr. David Buckles that we table item N-E, I mean, N-1, until the superintendent and the school board's attorney will have an opportunity to look through the question, to sort out, and then get back with us per recommendation for the board. And it's been seconded by Mrs. Wagner. Any further discussion?
All right, the only other thing I'd like to say is reiterate that if we need to do a Zoom meeting or an emergency meeting, at which time we get the information, certainly they'll be in touch with you guys.
Okay.
And let you know.
Hey, I appreciate it. I really do.
In fairness, I mean, we need to do what we need to do, but we need to respect the time for sure.
For sure.
Yeah, we're all, hey, we're all for it. We just want to make sure...
Hey, we want to be here. We love Florida.
Yeah.
I'm actually doing another one in East Palaca.
Very good. Well, thank you for investing in Putnam County.
It's not next to a school sign.
Don, thank y'all for coming in.
Now, I'll call the question.
Let's call the vote. All right, here is no further discussion. All in favor, let it be known by aye. Aye. Opposes, here is no, all right, and one opposed, four, one. Motion carries.
And I'll, once again, I'll wait and hear from our board attorney, then I will contact you, Madam Chair, and, you know, we'll let you know. Thank you.
Do you need any more copies? Because I really don't need to haul them back to Pennsylvania.
Oh, sure. I'll take it.
Thank you for coming in. Hey, you need a card?
Yeah.
Can you get another, do we have another card?
That, that's not even a preliminary site plan. That's just, I mean, what he's waiting to do is the engineering and all that, which has to...
Thanks for coming in.
All right, thank you. Which we would sit on that committee.
Have a safe trip back to Pennsylvania.
That's the process.
Supposed to be really cold.
Oh, legal.
I'd tell you to move to Florida, but we've got so many people here now. It's ridiculous.
We are now ready for our board report.
Yeah, I'm packing up.
Yeah.
For the...
Thank you all. We're gonna start with Mr. Theo Leary.
Oh.
With your board report.
Oh, Madam Chair, I don't have a report. I'm sorry. Am I supposed to have one?
This is just something...
I know. I'm good. I'm good kidding.
All right, Mrs. Wagner?
I'd just like to say, I attended my first spelling bee as a judge this week, and I haven't been around a spelling bee since I won one in fourth or fifth grade. And it was wonderful to see the kids. It broke my heart, the stress they were going under. They were just shaking, but that's also good for them. Some of the other things I think they learn in that position is getting in front of people, being on a stage. It's very intimidating even for most adults. So to see them get up there and, and the two that took it to the end over multiple, multiple rounds, it was, it was really a good experience. And I was also going to say just a shout out to our district staff. I went to a separate training session in Sarasota on Saturday, put on by the Leadership Institute. And I heard so many stories from new board members across the country. One was from Wyoming, one was from Canada, we had South Carolina, and many in Florida. And some of the horror stories I were, I was hearing with their, that they were dealing with, with their own district and trying to get supportive documentation for meetings. They'd get an agenda. They couldn't get anything out of their own people. And it was absolutely distressing for me to hear that. And I kept just, they're telling all their stories, and I'm just sitting there going, you know, yeah, I'm good. Our people are great. So I've, just a thank you for your patience with a lot of my questions. You know, it's a learning, it's a learning curve for me as well, but there's certain things that are important to me, and I just want to clarify with, with people. Definitely sooner than I did this week, but I'll get better at that.
Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Buckles?
I think it's been taken care of. We've tabled this, this request. It's not out of any sort of malice, other than we're trying to find out the best solution that's legal, that we can do, that doesn't endanger our staff and kids. And, you know, like I say, even the district looked at buying this property years past, so who knows? But we'll, we'll let them get back with our attorneys and advise us and that. Other than that, I hope everybody just has a great holiday season and continues on.
Same to you.
Been going to a lot of soccer games. Kids are playing soccer.
Okay, Mrs. Pickens?
Um, I'd just like to again say how exciting it was to have our superintendent named Superintendent of the Year. That was definitely a highlight for all of us at the FSBA conference. I thought this conference that we went to was probably one of the best I've been to as far as the breakout sessions. The, there were a couple improving outcomes, and then the mental health issues, which I was really pleased to see alongside, come on the consent agenda today. But one school, it was, but Levy County, no, Citrus County. They, they presented, trying to get parent and student, you know, engagement and teacher engagement, community. They said that we should have a school board member on our, our school advisory committees, our SAC teams, that there should be a school board person represented at every one, just because it helps get, you know, communication going. So I would volunteer for the two schools down in the south end, if that's something...
We can actually have our principal supervisors, Laura, is that, did you have a comment about that?
I think you would be well, you could go to any of them.
Composition is set. A board member is not required on it. They can sit on it. A long time ago, a board member actually used to go in and read and review the school improvement plan at the school site prior to it coming to the board. So board members went out and kind of did the work that we do now, where we all read it. We all look at it, review it, and ensure that it has everything it's supposed to before we send it to all of you. The only reason it comes up is that that is one of the things that we were in an audit for, is our composition. We are submitting our, in fact, we've already submitted to the state, the composition of our SAC committees at the schools in which you are not a member unless you already were, because we, that was actually approved.
Yeah, last meeting.
Could they be like an ex officio or just attend it?
They absolutely can. And those meetings are always open.
Sure.
We can ask the principals to invite them.
Right.
If you would like.
We know when they were, yeah.
But as far as the voting number that already have that composition...
Right.
Right, and in a way, that would, might maybe be a double vote or something, but, yeah, no, but if you could do that for me, I would appreciate it.
We can have our supervisors reach out to each principal and talk.
We can talk about it.
Because I have a lot of...
We've been given a lot of feedback regarding that, because it is an item that...
Four than one show up, you'd have to probably excuse yourselves for sunshine reasons.
Okay, thank you. And then one other really kind of cool little thing was the school bus. They, they took an old school bus and they revamped it. This was Osceola County. And they called it the Mommy and Me Reading Bus. And I just saw it as a great idea. Of course, you know, you never know how much that would cost to have somebody on the bus and stuff, but I still thought it was a neat idea. And they were trying to get their reading scores up. And they said that they had seen an improvement since this bus went out to the communities where parents or guardians or, you know, any adult could read with a child, pre, preschool, like before pre-K. And I also went to the James A. Long Spelling Bee, and I think it went 17 rounds. And, and it was fabulous. The readers, I mean, the spellers were really good. And, but probably one of the neatest things, when we were walking out of the school, we were not sure, Ms. Wagner and I were not sure if we could get out that gate, you know, because it's locked. And so there was class right there, and they happened to be coming out. And the teacher turned and said, you know, you know, kind of let them go by. And the two boys, the first two boys, one opened the gate for us and smiled, and they were so respectful. The teacher's name was Ms. Blitch. And so I, I emailed Beth Nelson the next morning just to say how polite all of those students were. And it really makes you feel good to, to be in a school where there's respect for adults. It was great.
Can I have one comment on that?
Yes, you can.
Just, it tickled me as well as we went on. I turned around to look at the boys, and they actually high-fived each other for having done that to us. And so obviously, someone is teaching them that showing respect and being polite and gentlemanly...
Great culture.
Was really, really good.
It was really good. It was really good. And then Friday, I spent the day at the history fair at Penile. And it was very educational. It, it was a wonderful thing. Mr. Massey put it on, and I think there were 54 projects between the junior high and the senior high. And it would be, I think, really good if the district, if we could have some representation at the history fair. It, you know, I know it's a lot of work, but I do think a lot of learning goes on there. And I'll just say, get out and support our winter sports at all our high schools and spelling bees at our elementary schools, and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens.
By the way, if I can add a comment, too. We got the idea from Osceola County several years ago. I went and saw a STEM bus. They actually had a, it was a STEM big bus. And we actually got the idea of our STEM van from Osceola County. So we steal stuff in education, and it's okay. But that's one of the ideas we got.
I did see the superintendent is leaving that county?
Yes, she is.
I read that on the...
Deborah, Deborah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Deborah's a good friend of mine, yeah.
They're point superintendent. They've kind of evolved pretty much.
She and I just served on a panel last week in Orlando at the National Avenue Conference, so she told me that time she was retiring.
Oh, okay.
Deborah Pace, yeah.
And I too did what what Mrs. Pickens said regarding how proud we are of our superintendent, of our district, you know. And, and immediately, I was just, stuff running through my mind, and I thought of this passage that asked, could any good thing come out of Nazareth? And I thought of Putnam County, how when people used to reference us, the Port County, Title I, free reduced lunch, et cetera. But nonetheless, we do what we do. Just want to congratulate and say thank you to Mrs. Starr Ganey for 30 years. She is retiring, and we appreciate her service to our students. The musical Aladdin, when you think that it can't get any better, Mr. Pignata just shows up. It was just wonderful. And I went to therapy on yesterday, and Debbie Decavellis's mother-in-law showed me the picture of the 102-year-old woman here in Palaca in Putnam County that goes every year, and they make a big deal of her. The whole cast takes pictures with her. Just, just excellent. Last night at the Jim McCool County Football Banquet, great culminating of the football season, and there were about five young men that, all of them pretty much said thank you, as Coach McCool was handing them their, their hardware. But think about five young men. After they got theirs, they came right down that table and shook hands and looked each of us in the face and smiled. Again, that's that training that you're talking about. It makes a difference.
Wish I'd have known, I would have liked to go on. I didn't know until I got there.
He said he didn't get it to you till late. Joe did apologize to us.
Yeah, I saw that.
And the article on the young man from QI, Mark Lawandowski, from QI in Germany, I mean, the, the whole article, very impressive, the first, you just don't walk in there and go, I mean, he had to go through something to get there and just want to, to say, hey, we're everywhere, and we're doing great things with that. Madam Attorney?
Well, I don't really have anything to report at this time, but I will say, just if you ever need anything or have any questions, like we already had discussed earlier, just let me know, and I will look into it and get back to you, and hopefully add a satisfactory response.
She's right across the street, so she can as well cross the street and do it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
And, and I just want to thank you for your thank yous about the Superintendent of the Year, and our entire executive team attended, and along with our board members. Mr. Buckles not able to come, but I appreciate y'all being there, and it meant a lot. But I do want to reiterate, this is an award for our entire district, and I'm the one that just, they happen to hand it to. But it does represent the hard efforts of our, our staff, our teachers, our students, our parents. And like you say, I think people think a little bit differently about Putnam County these days in the educational world. And there's a lot of, a lot of things going on, but it is a credit to all the hard work. And we're still going up. So, yeah, thank you for that. I do want to bring up, speaking of our board, and this came up earlier, earlier in Tampa about master board training. And I would just like, at some point in time, y'all to discuss master board training, and especially because we had two new board members, but I'm a firm believer that that really sets the tone for our future together. So if you will get with, Madam Chair, if you'll get with Susan, and she can maybe set up a time to maybe look at some dates, is that okay, Susan?
Do a workshop, or just...
Well, it's actually a series of meetings.
Okay.
And it's through the FSBA. And I forget what, four or five meetings, something like that? We've done it.
And the first one is...
They come here, right?
Three, and they, they run about five, five hours, four to five hours.
And I want that to be something, I don't know if that's a vote or not, but I, maybe consensus, but I just want everybody to feel good about that. And of course, it's entirely voluntary, but, you know...
The bonding activities, just...
Do you individually have to be a master board member for the board to qualify for the board?
No, no, that, we would all have to be certified to be a certified board.
Oh, certified board member, I'm sorry.
But master board is...
Yeah, is something different.
And I attend that as well. I mean, and we meet and, you know, just talk about our roles and how we operate together. So I think it's very positive. At our first student superintendent advisory council meeting today, and I met at the collab lab over at CLO, and we had, I forget, probably, I don't know, 20 kids there from our secondary schools around the district. And we got to know each other and ask them things like, how can we make the transition to the 7-12 model go better? And they really had some great ideas. And there are some other things they suggested, but we, we really started a good dialogue. Going to meet again in January, and I think it's something that, I told them, we're going to see things happen because of that input, and I think it's really important. Want to thank the Theobolds for the banquet last night. They sponsored, this is the first face-to-face all-county banquet in football that we've had since 2019. I did not realize that because of COVID, but it went very well. Want to, I want to thank our staff here. Laura actually presented at the Cognia Conference last week, and her and a good friend of mine from Washington State, and she actually presented as we go through the accreditation process next year. But I got great reviews from my friend, and so I think Laura's just going to go out on the circuit here pretty soon, you know. And I also want to congratulate our HR department. Tanya and Kristen are going to be presenting next month. and Kristen are gonna be presenting next month at a national conference on the novice teacher mentor program, our pairs to pros, and a lot of our recruitment and retention effort. And for our new board members, in case you didn't know, we are, when we hire teachers, we have a system in place where we plan to keep them. We're not gonna let them go. And we, a lot of the efforts that our HR department has done, we've increased retention rates, correct me on the numbers, from 60-something percent to 90-something percent over the last two years. So when we hire them, we, we do some, we give them a lot of support and a good starting salary. And we plan on keeping them. And the nation is taking note of what they're doing. So they've been asked to speak a number of times. Is that correct? Spot on. So I'm proud of you guys. That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anything else to come before the board? Motion to adjourn?
It's a move.
All right.